And Lord, we invoke your divine presence here tonight. We ask you, Lord, to release the Holy Spirit of God to fill the atmosphere of this room, that nothing would be done outside the bounds of righteousness and holiness. God, we love this city, we desire this city to be a place of peace and rest, tranquility and prosperity, to move forward unto the will and the ways of God. So, Lord, we thank you and praise you that your presence is here. We invite your power. We ask that the Holy Spirit of God would impart wisdom and knowledge and understanding into everyone that speaks from this podium, from everyone that makes a decision, from everyone, Lord, that brings their hearts before you tonight. So, Lord, we pray for this city. We love this city, we desire this city, oh God, to be bigger and better. But, Lord, before even our desire, it was the heart of you, oh God, that you had plans for this city, that we would be a city of righteousness, that you would flood the streets of this city, oh God, and there would be righteousness, it would be holiness, and there would be love among and between your people. So, tonight, Father, we bring before you everything on this agenda. We pray, oh God, that you would drop the plumb line of righteousness in this place, and everything that is spoken, everything, Father, that is decided, would line up with the plumb line of the word of God. Nothing would be done outside the bounds of the holy word of God. Because, Lord, you are our protection, you are our guide. So, Lord, we bring before you these leaders. We know that there is no authority in this earth apart from whom you have appointed and you have divinely put into that position of authority. Lord, we bring before you tonight Mayor Reed. We thank you and praise you, oh God, that you have placed him in this position of authority to lead this city unto your will and your way, which we know is to do what is right and what is holy. So, Lord, you guide him and protect him and undergird him, oh Lord, that he will hear your voice and follow your voice as you say, "This is the way; walk you in it." Lord, we bring before you every one of these councilmen, these councilwomen, that you have put there, Lord, to lead and guide this city. We pray, oh God, that you do impart to them what you want to be done, how you want to respond, what you want to move in the heart of everything that comes before you tonight. Lord, we are believing that your presence is here, that your power is ruling, and we thank you and praise you, oh God. So, Lord, we want to believe that you will move in the heart of crime in this city to turn the hearts of the wicked and the evil back to the heart of God. But, Lord, while you work doing the impossible for us, we ask you, oh God, that we would look to you and know that it is not impossible. And, Lord, we know tonight, our desire is that the testimony of this meeting is that you were glorified, that we bring you honor and we bring you glory over this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Counselor, any motion on the work session minutes for the 21st of December?
Mr. President, move to the doc.
All right, raise your hand.
Six with Counselor Lyons abstaining.
Okay. Any motion on the regular councilman minutes for the 21st of December?
Mr. President, move to the doc.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to everybody. Glad to see we've got so many people here participating, to everyone that's here. Hopefully, you had a great holiday season. I've just got a couple of items for the mayor's message. We're going to start off, unfortunately, where we left last year, and that's just with a COVID update. We want to speak to that. I know there've been questions about the school system, questions about City Hall, and all these things. We want to make sure that everyone is committed to doing the best they can in this atmosphere as we see COVID rates rise around this city and this county and this community. This variant is exponentially more contagious than any that have come along. It's impacted our city council, it's impacted my household in the last two weeks. And so, we understand firsthand kind of what we're dealing with. If you look at year-to-year, year-over-year numbers, from January 1st through the 4th, 2021, we saw 271 new cases of COVID-19. So, a year ago, we had 271 new cases. The same period, from January 1st to January 4th of this year, we have confirmed 1,737 new cases. So, for youth stat geeks, that is a 540% increase year-over-year. That is a significant amount of new data and new infections that we're seeing again from across the city, from fire and rescue to Police Department and other departments within the city, and we're seeing it throughout the community. I think although we have reached a 43% vaccination rate, with 54% of residents having one dose, we can do more, we must do more. I think it's important for us, if there's one takeaway for all of you, it is, I would encourage you to get vaccinated, I would encourage you to get your booster shot, I would encourage you to take those steps to mitigate any issues that we may have here as a community collectively, and to try to set that example so that we can continue to start 2022 off on the right note. At this point, we're going to go to our financial update. We'll go to the first slide. When we look at sales and use tags, we're seeing positive numbers there. We're seeing 11% increase, growth. Obviously, we look at December, we look at fiscal year 2022 versus fiscal year 2021. That has driven a large part of what we've seen so far in the first quarter of our fiscal year, which started again in October, going through November and December. So, when you have a 26% sales and use tax, that's very strong, and it's an indicator of our economy here being robust. I think it's indicated here of people spending money in the city with our local retailers, and that is great, particularly given when people weren't sure what the holiday numbers would look like. So, we'll take that any day, and we're glad to see that. Next slide, please. If we look at lodging tax, again, we see positive numbers here year-over-year. We've seen in October, we had strong numbers of 47%, and we had a slight dip in in November around Thanksgiving holiday. And in December, we saw a 67%, if you want to round up, percent increase there. We had a number of activities going on. Obviously, the Camellia Bowl was very well done, and I want to congratulate everybody for taking a first-class approach to that. And I think it showed in our results, in the viewership, as well as the experience that many of the attendees had. But we've all, we're also seeing strong numbers here because of the mild winter, because of the weather. We're seeing those numbers reflected in the lodging tax, and that's important as we go into 2022, in which we hope we'll start to rebound and support a little bit of our tourism industry, from fan reunions to conferences into church groups and school groups coming into our city. So, we're looking forward to that. And as we have discussed with our city council president, our pro temp, investing some of the new allocation of dollars into our parks and recreation spaces, in particular in Lagoon Park, we want to see that number increase through sports and youth tournaments as well. Next slide. Gasoline tax, again, reflects what we saw in other taxes in December. It's an 18% increase, and again, when you juxtapose that versus what we saw in October and November, you see a dramatic increase there, which again puts us in a positive space as it relates to our overall budget and what we're bringing. These taxes are all revenue drivers. For those who may not be familiar with why we show this, these are all revenue drivers for our budget. So, when you wonder how a city is funded, how municipalities funded, these are the primary drivers that you see in our budget driving those revenue streams. And so, we want to kind of give everybody at least a monthly look at this to kind of look at how things are doing year-over-year, but also just how we can look at it quarterly as well. So, being in the green at 4% and net positive is very strong, and we're glad to see those December numbers. Stay right along with sales and use tax and lodging tax. Next slide, please. Now, here, the alcohol beverage and use tax went down somewhat. It's still at one point, let's just say 1% year-over-year, with a negative growth rate of almost the same at 1%. Last year, when we, a lot of people were staying at home, this number was tremendously high, and we were seeing that because people were buying their spirits and doing things at home. Now, as people are moving around a little bit more, you're seeing that number come down a little bit. But again, it's important to understand that some of it's going to be offset in some of the sales and use tax, if they are spending money in our restaurants and in some of our small businesses that provide those type of beverages, if you will. So, I'll take that, don't want to keep it there in the negative, but we'll take that for December. Next slide, please. All right. That concludes our financial update. And at this time, we have a very important honor we want to bring before you. We have a proclamation for longtime employee of Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts, and that is, we're bidding farewell to Mr. Percy Bowman, who for 33 years has served the city and the museum, and really is more than just a employee and security guard. He's really an institution out there. He knows a lot more about art than he'll tell you. Certainly knows a lot more about art than I do. But he has been a valuable resource and a partner to the operations team and to the museum as a whole. And one of the great things about this is he's respected and liked by all of his employees. When asked kind of how, would they describe him, words such as hard worker, phrases such as a joy to work with, a great team player, positive, are all things that people share with us. And this is one of the things that we can't always do with our longtime team members, but as much as we can, we just want to try to bring them before the public because it takes all of our 2,600-plus employees to help us make this city go. And it's not just the mayor, it's not just the council or those departments that you see. It is the people who make up these departments that make Montgomery what it is and continue to help buy into the vision of where we want to take this city. And so, it's people like Mr. Bowman that we try to get out in front of the community, in front of the council as often as we can. And we're glad to have a proclamation, and we're not going to say goodbye. We're just going to wish him well in this next chapter. And just know that if we need some tour guides for the museum, we may be bringing him back for free to give us some feedback. So, Mr. Bowman, you will please come on up, and we'll get a photo op with you along with the city council. Congratulations. Mr. President, that's going to conclude the mayor's message at this time. Thank you.
All right. Adam Clark, first item. Please, go ahead.
Mr. President, item one, mayoral veto of ordinance number 65-2021, ordinance reapportioning in council districts 1 through 9.
I have two people who want to talk. I want to remind everybody, we've got a lot of people talking tonight. Three-minute maximum, and I'll address them to the council. So, Mr. Joe Reed, you're number one. Please go ahead, come forward, sir. Three minutes. Mr. Reed, come on.
Thanks, Mr. President. The mayor, this is the council. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you and share some thoughts concerning the ordinance adopting the, mayor adopting the redistricting plan for the city of Montgomery. First, I want to thank all the others who came to be here to express their concern about the plan. In all due respect to this council, I want to say to you that we believe that the plan you passed, the one that the last plan we received from the city, I don't know whether there are more plans out there or not, but the last one we received tells us that this plan is in violation of the federal law. I'm not talking about what's in violation of the political convenience of council members or individual citizens. We're talking about the plan that you passed. In 1975, we changed the form of government. And in changing the form of government, a plan was drawn, and it had, out of the nine members on the city council district, there were two majority-black districts and seven majority-white districts. So, I was jacked the street with split. Not going to spend a lot of time on that, but I want to point that out for one reason, the president and members of the council. And that is, that time, we took issue with the dent. And almost, not every time, but almost every time, we had reapportionment, we have had some problems. And we don't need to have these problems. And all due respect to all of us here. We also had to go, went to court in that particular case and wound up having to redraw the district lines. And instead of winding up with seven majority-white districts and two majority-black districts, we wound up with four districts, black and five white. It's been that way ever since. A couple of other things I want to call this council's attention, and I'm going to move as fast as I possibly can.
Time up. You can't, it's, your time's up, okay?
Time's up?
Yeah, yeah, give me, I'll give you half a minute, okay? Please sum up.
Mr. President, let's give him three more minutes to let him finish what he got to say, and then we'll move on from there.
Okay, fine, go ahead.
I have some more time?
Yeah, three more minutes.
You got three more minutes.
This is more than three, take no more than three minutes to clear up my throat. But fundamentally, let me say this, then. The plan that we passed, that you passed, that plan did not have any public input. The public never had a chance to come and express this entire appreciation because it takes more than three minutes or six minutes for me to talk about a reapportionment plan. So, what I'm saying is that the plan did not, so you need to go back. And I'm asking not to, I'm asking not to pass this plan tonight. And the way you can get around that is simply sustain the mayor's veto, just sustain it, and then we start back with a whole new plan. You don't have to do anything, just sustain the veto and recover the whole new plan because six minutes is not enough for us to talk about a reapportionment plan. It's absolutely not enough, and the people in the public have not had enough chance to really discuss that. And even some of the districts are packed. That's impacting some districts. Now, I call your attention to the case that the Alabama Democratic Council took to the US Supreme Court a few years back. And that case focused even on Montgomery District 26. And I would encourage you to talk to your lawyers before you do that. Talk to your lawyers. And so, we can sit down and negotiate and talk about a plan that everybody can live with.
Yes, sir.
But now, you can't just come and give us six minutes and we finish and that is it. So, we need more time, the public need more time, we need more input, and we need to swap thoughts about it.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions.
My time's up again?
Yeah, hang on, hang on.
So, here we are. I strongly urge you not to override the mayor's veto because we need to have more time to work out a plan.
Very good, we got you.
And we can negotiate rather than litigate.
Okay, understand.
And that's what I hope you can do.
One other person wants to talk this afternoon.
But my time is up, I quit.
Mr. General, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Reed, what violation of federal law did we break? It's me. What violation of federal law did we break?
So, what?
What, you said we broke a federal law by doing our districts.
Packing?
Sir?
Packing.
Packing what?
What I mean by packing, some of these districts are 84% or 85% black.
You hadn't looked, excuse, do what now?
You haven't looked.
You hadn't looked at this map, Mr. Reed.
Well, if so, it's the plan, what a plan that's submitted to us.
All right.
The plan that was submitted to us.
That's enough.
What?
We'll move on. We've heard your, we've heard your story. The time is up.
Mr. President, let me get to the main question.
Hold on.
We need, we need a chance, Mr. President and council members, we need a chance to talk about this entire plan. Six minutes is not enough of public input.
Mr. Reed, there's been three different meetings on this thing, and one was about an hour where you could have public input, so.
Mr. President.
No.
Mr. President. Let me just explain this, Mr. President, let me just get the record straight. I think the myth is out that we voted on one plan. We had three particular maps that were presented, that we had public hearings on. We made clear, we made the public announcement. You know, I'm just going to put it plain, ignorance of the law is no excuse. It was made plain that we would have a public hearing. We did that, so we voted on a fourth map. So, we had three maps that were presented. The map came out on the fourth map that went back into the oven and came out baking that we voted on the map two weeks ago. We had a public hearing at that council meeting on that map. We had a public hearing at that council meeting on that map. I understand where we at, about where we at on the map and where we need to go. I think we have a plan going forward as far as if we come back and we can revisit a map, we can revisit this plan or what we need to do, but we have to act on the veto tonight. We have, based on Act 618, we have to act on the veto tonight.
At no time, this plan is advertised.
Oh, yeah.
Legally, it has to be advertised in order for us to vote.
At no time did anybody know what the public didn't know about.
Yes, sir.
Y'all must have kept, took us to the whispering room.
All right, thank you very much. Next, next person to talk.
Okay, I respect the council.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. General. Appreciate you. Okay. I got Angela, Angela.
There's another one who want to speak too.
No, they didn't sign up.
Okay.
Only one person, I got two people signed up. Angela Oxford, you signed up. Please come forward.
I respect the rules. I respect the rules.
All right, thank you.
Just something saying, the public needs more time.
Thank you very much.
And we have to get it one way or the other.
We got it, okay. Angela, please.
We'll get the time. Good evening to the council and our elected official and mayor. I had an opportunity to review the map. I was here at the public hearing of the last city council meeting. I was very excited to the fact that our community was not split in half. I respect all of you for the decision that you made. And yes, we have to look at cultural change in our city. Cultural change is huge, and we all need to look at that. Also, look at root cause as to why citizens are migrating to the east side. So, we as a whole must come together and move forward. And I appreciate all that you do, our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. No, we're through. No, 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 no. No, no. You have to sign up. We did not have a sign. Everybody that signed up is up. No.
Can I speak?
No.
You can ask. You know.
I'm sorry.
You guys want to ask me if I speak, he gonna bite you.
No, you can, let me hear from you, Mr. Boyd.
All right, go ahead.
I'm gonna say it like what the dogs can get it. I saw all four of the plans, and the plan that Genright brought to the table.
I did not bring it.
Hold on. Genright didn't bring it.
The council brought it up.
You have an MCDC organization that all y'all go to to get endorsement, who proposed a plan on the betterment of our community, which called the black, the black plan. Put it like that. We own the school board, we own the sheriff department, we own the, most of the judges. Y'all had an opportunity to make it where it would be five blacks instead of four blacks. Y'all had an opportunity to at least argue the fact that we want to sit, we want, we want, we want a chair at the table. Y'all had an opportunity to do that, but y'all voted with the Republican plan. It didn't make no sense. We had representation. I know it may sound not, not something that you want to hear, but we had an opportunity, man, ever since 1975. Joe Reed, who happened to be the chairman of the MCDC in the ADC, had been fighting for equality. We asking for justice and equality, and long as we go along with the plan that Genright proposed to y'all, that's a step backward, brother. And y'all know it, I'm just, I saw the number.
That plan, Mr. Boyd, that plan came from.
They have packed.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes, sir.
That plan came from Mr. Robert Smith.
Sir.
That, that plan came from Robert Smith and the whole entire council, and I submitted the plan from Lou Hammons. So, we all submitted different plans. So, that plan actually didn't come from, so let's correct that. That did not come from Mr. Genright. That map came from the city, which is Robert Smith.
But did you see the MCDCs? District 7, District 7 and District 8 should belong to the black community. We fought for that.
Hey, Mr. President.
We earned that, and y'all know it. So, y'all, if you voted to, if you voted, if you voted to stabilize your friends, you set the community back.
You want to leave? I'm gonna have the police take you out.
But for what, speaking? I'm just saying, you know, truth hurts.
Tone down, tone down.
Hey, I'm calm as I can be, but it's hurt. You know, I have children that grown up, they have to, that to follow the rules about these plans. It's not fair, man. And I commend, I commend Joe Reed for coming up at 83 years old, still trying to be a voice for the black community, and the peoples up there that they helped put in office had turned their back on the community. That's what I'm here to say, it's wrong.
Mr. President, no, I have a question. Mr. Smith, can you come up to the podium, please, sir?
You got to make it make sense. If y'all saw, if y'all saw the map, y'all will see the plan that Joe Reed put up, placed before the council. And it makes sense because of the population. We are 170 strong, and they are 60% strong.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith's got a question.
I have a question. Very quickly, and the numbers speak for themselves. We saw the map. Can you go through all nine districts, just real quickly, and share with us the breakdown of each district? What is what and who is who?
But you got to show all the proposals.
Hey, be quiet, Mr. Boyd.
You got, you got to show all the map. You just can't show your map. You got to show all the proposals and the fact that they're gonna have on the, on the.
Mr. Smith, please.
You can't show no one map.
Mr. Smith, I'm asking for my map, please.
Mr. Boyd, you need to leave.
Yes, sir.
You need to leave, Mr. Boyd.
All right, but they gonna take me out, take me out. What I'm doing, what I'm leaving for? I'm here speaking at the public forum.
You're, you're breaking up the meeting, okay?
Just, just the numbers, and that's it. We don't need a lot of stuff. But I would just like for this council to understand and the general public, what we as a group and you as a group worked on.
Yes, sir. Well, first and, first and foremost, it's, it's not, just all due respect for Mr. Mitchell, we only helped to facilitate the plan that the council eventually approved. So, we, we had the technical. So we, we had the technical expertise, and I, I didn't, actually didn't draw a line at all. That was actually the responsibility of our geographic information systems manager and staff. Ms. Bowen, if she'll raise her hand, I know she doesn't really wanna do that, but she's really good with geography, maps, statistics, all of that good stuff. So, uh, just a general breakdown of the numbers and, and, and we'll kind of compare what you approved to the other two proposals, just to kind of run down the, the numbers generally. So if we look at district number one, and I wish that I had, uh, I could actually put this up on the screen, because it, it would actually show a lot better versus what I'm reading here off of my spreadsheet. Uh, district number one, in your approved plan, and, and we're just talking black to white, because largely Montgomery is sixty percent black, twenty-nine percent white. So it's largely a majority black city, uh, for the most part. But there are other demographic groups such as Hispanics and Asian, but largely made up of mostly black and white. So for district number one, based on what you approved at your last meeting, um, the black percentage in that particular district is forty-two percent black, compared to forty-nine point, uh, zero five percent white. The next district, district number two, that district, based on your approved plan, is fifty percent, point zero four percent black, thirty-nine point five two percent white. District number three, that percentage, black to white, is sixty-two point five three percent black, twenty-five point seven seven percent white. District number four, eighty-two point two one percent black and ten point six five percent white. District number five, seventy-three point three five percent black and eighteen point eight nine percent white. District number six, eighty-four point zero nine percent black and six percent white. District number seven, fifty-two point nine five percent black and forty point seventy-eight percent white. And district number nine, forty-five percent, forty-five point seventy-two percent black and forty-two point five five percent, uh, white. Now, now if you look at the.
Skip eight.
Forty-five point seven two percent black and forty-two point five five percent white. Now, if you look at the overall majorities.
You're skipping somebody.
Did I skip, did I skip one?
It's either me, it's either me or Charlie.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, eight, district eight was forty-eight point seven four percent black and thirty point six zero percent white. I'm, I'm sorry for skipping that.
That's alright.
Now, if you look at the overall, whether it was majority black or, uh, or a simple majority, so there were eight majority black districts. Four out of that total were a super majority, meaning that it was sixty-two percent or more. Uh, there were three simple black majorities, meaning that it was below sixty-two percent. And there was one simple white majority, again, meaning it was below sixty-two percent. And there's even a breakdown on the eighteen and over, uh, voting age population as well, and I will go into that. And now we'll go to the, the ARRP, Proposed Plan.
I think we're.
Yeah, I could.
You got, you got, you got his question answered.
I just wanted to.
Are you sure?
I just wanted the people to understand what we voted on and where we came from with this.
And you had a, eight, eight, eight majority black districts. Very good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Robert.
Alright. Public hearing's over with, in front of the council, motion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move to override the veto.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Next item?
Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning one parcel of land containing nineteen forty-one acres, located on the east side of Taylor Road, north of Troy Highway, from an Ag One district to an R fifty district.
Mr. Nick, Mr. Tommy?
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property to allow the development of single-family homes.
Is there a representative of this property here tonight? Yes, sir, come forward. Your, your name for the record, sir?
Um, my name is Rutwitz Patel.
Okay, Mr. Patel.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, the use of the property, you will be, it's got, I think, tell us something about what you're gonna do with this property.
Uh, Mr. Kenneth White is my representative, and I'm the developer, so I would like him to answer any questions you have.
Very good, okay. Mr. White, you changing? Okay, Kenny.
Sir, sir, was a question, again?
Are you dividing the property into fifty-foot lots?
That's right, it's, it's, it's zoned, uh, we're rezoning to R fifty, it'd be fifty-foot wide lots. There's approximately, I forget how many lots we've proposed, but the immediate south property line, it's, the south property is zoned R fifty as well. So we feel that this is appropriate zoning.
The property now zoned is agricultural, agricultural residential, so it could be, you could build a home for it today.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, alright. Any of that, this is a public hearing, you don't wanna like speak on this item, please come forward. Anyone wanna speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing's been held, the public council, in motion?
Mr. Doc.
Have most of the, the doc, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Good luck with your development, sir.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Item three, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning one parcel of land containing four point six acres, located on the west side of Edgar D. Nixon Avenue, north of Liberty Street, from an R fifty district to an R sixty M district.
Need a representative of Exotic Lounge here, please?
Good evening, and thank you for seeing us this evening. Uh, this proposed rezoning will be a partnership with the city, um, for a fifty-unit multifamily development.
Oh, did I think you were, okay, sorry. No, it's great, it's for. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Did the council get a chance to review the information that was provided? Okay.
We need your name for the record, please.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Erin Bulldog.
Okay.
Um, and these will be affordable units, this will be a partnership, like I said, between, um, my nonprofit community action partnership with North Alabama and the city. Um, we have a long history of partnering together, using the city home funds to produce affordable housing in communities around the city.
Okay, I understand that, very good. Any questions? This is a, this is a public hearing, anyone like speak on this item, please come forward. One person, let's see, got, guess the focus, I'd like to have one speaker, Joe McGuire was, no, I said, no, number three, number three.
Yeah, number three, Karen Jones.
Karen Jones, Karen Jones, I'll let Karen speak, yes, Karen.
Karen, is the property, when we went to the planning zone meeting, we were told that this was gonna be apartment complex, correct? We did this about a decade ago when Mayor McRevenue was here, and he told the house, told us that the houses in front, it was gonna be a second plan to build more houses or lease to own. That was changed. Now, you all might discuss it with the city, but you didn't come to the community to discuss it with us, because we said this about a decade ago, we did not want an apartment. We wanted to keep our historical community just as is, we did not wanna urbanize it. We don't want apartments because across the street from it, they're building senior homes. Behind CVS on Rosa Parks is a senior facility. We have a food desert over there. Senior citizens who live in St. Jude have to take their motor, um, wheelchairs to roll down South Court Street to IGA because Pigley Wiggly is closed. So it's no need to, number one, not come to the community, because we already have senior citizens out there. We have a food desert, we don't want an apartment. We want houses to keep our historic community in the historical look and feel of the grass community.
Please talk to us.
In the grass community, we wanted to keep it the historical look and feel, we did not want it to urbanize. Uh-uh, Omicron, we just discussed it. So, we, I emailed Clay McInnis, and all of y'all should have got it. We discussed it with some of our senior citizens who are already out there. They never bought us renderings, they never came out to talk to us, and we already discussed this, again, about a decade ago, when they tried to do it. If it's not your group, another group tried to build apartments, and we said no to apartments. Because we were told it was gonna be houses out there. The second phase to that near court, houses, not apartments. Because if it's three stories, they'll be able to look down in our homes, those of us who own homes out there. So, no, we are vehemently opposed to this.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Jones, okay? I don't have anybody else signed to talk on this, so it's the public of the council, the public hearing's been held, the public council, in motion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Hold on, one, two.
Got them all?
Five. I need up Mr. Mitchell, did you abstain?
Yes, ma'am.
Four out of six, okay, alright.
We got one.
Get up with the fight.
The ordinance is adopted. Item four, application for a lounge retail liquor class one license doing business at Exotic Lounge at twenty-one Coliseum Boulevard.
Representative Exotic Lounge comes, please come forward.
Thanks, sir.
Alright, uh, we don't have, this has already had a public hearing. Mr. Lyons, you got any questions? Now, all you people are for this bar? Okay. I've got a bunch of folks signed up, I assume all of you are here for that. Anybody signed up here?
Want me to call them out?
Can I ask a question?
Alright, Miss, Miss.
I got some, it's a public, but I guess we were signing, talking. How many of y'all live in District Two? One, two, three, four. Five.
Everybody in this district.
Alright, y'all are all for the bar, okay? I need, I got somebody, Mr. Joe McGuire. Mr. McGuire, are you here? Please come forward. Please step back.
I also live in this district as well.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mr. President, want me to call the, the ones out for item number four, so we can go ahead and knock this out at one? Ms. Erica Blow? Okay, if I call your name, you're up, just come on up. Uh, Karina Ziegler? It's that Sherry Helms? Cruz Reeves? Marquise Willis?
That you?
Okay, uh.
What was the first Erica?
Erica Blow.
Okay.
You got Karina Ziegler?
Yes, and Sherry Helms, Cruz Reeves, and Marquise Wells.
Cruz Reeves? In the future, we would, if we get them to print their names on here, because signatures are kind of hard to read.
Marquise Wells?
Willis, Marquise Willis.
Here I go.
Are these for or against?
Uh, if you're for or against when I call your name, just say for or against, and we, we know you're standing.
Please, I, I think we just separate, put the fours over, fours over here, the against over, other, other way. Alright, okay, y'all, all the, all the against, all the fours over here, against over here, okay?
I'm gonna fix this, Mr. Genright. If you signed up on the public communication roster, general, four, item number four, please step to your left. Just come on up if you signed up. And the ones that oppose, if you just step up to your right.
Alright.
And we gonna print next time.
We can't read all these names. Alright, that's good, okay?
Thank you.
I need, uh, Mr. McGuire, you want to speak?
Yes, sir. I'm Joe McGuire, I'm president of Eastbrook Morning View Neighborhood Association, and I appreciate the council and the president giving us time to speak. We live in a residential neighborhood, and we've just had, the, we just had a bar just close down the shack not long ago. The police kept coming out there every night, and I'll have to get the police to back me up. But they had fights about every night, and it disturbed the neighborhood.
Hey, don't let him speak.
He won't speak.
No, you, no, we don't want, huh? No, wait, you're, you're up, Mr. McGuire.
Okay. Uh, the lounge, whether you're going for a lounge, there's an advertisement put out for twenty-one Coliseum Boulevard to do, uh, tax reports and stuff like that, so I don't know what kind of business it is, but, uh, we've got brochures and it's on the internet. They do consultant work and tax work, and now they want it to a lounge, so we are understanding. But that intersection there is one of the dangerous intersection in Montgomery with Atlanta Highway and Coliseum Boulevard, and the lounge does not have enough room for parking. It's not, no parking place at that lounge. And the neighbors behind it, it was bad enough when Johnny Zipp was there, and we have, we were at a residential area, neighborhood, we wanted to raise a family and kids, we've got churches, schools, and daycares there. And we do, we got enough, and enough problems without having a lounge, people drinking. And the number one thing, if you read the statistics, liquor and violence is no thing. Everything coordinates around liquor when you do violence, that's murders, rapes, and everything else. And I've got a whole crew back here behind me from the neighborhood, and also we got several notes that could not make it, and they would not come because of COVID, and they didn't want to come.
Anybody here opposed to it, please stand? Okay, alright, that's what you're going to hear, okay, you got another one there, stand, okay, alright, it makes sense. Alright, uh, Mr. McGuire, you talk.
Thank you for your time, anything else?
That's all we need, okay?
Alright, appreciate it.
Mr. McGuire? Have you had an opportunity to speak to the owners, have you had a sit-down meeting with the owners of the establishment?
Negative, uh, our councilman, Brantley Lyons, at, he told us that she was gonna call us after the last council meeting, sit down with Eastbrook Morning View, Forest Hills, Dalrada, and maybe Lee Oaks, and talk to us, and we'd see what she had in proposition. The whole time, we never got a phone call, never got a text, email, no contact at all. So, we figured she didn't wanna meet with us.
So are you guys willing to sit down and meet with the owners?
We would meet her and talk about it. There's no problem, we're, we're not against business, only problem is, and we wanted to make sure that she had all her people trained if she was gonna have it. But what she put out in the brochures, if, I don't know what he passed out, but, uh.
He more than happy to have this one.
Right, but. No, you called me before, and I told you I wanted to.
Talk to us, talk.
Excuse me, but she didn't, she did not call me, seriously. Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Brantley, you got, Mr. Lyons, you got things to say?
That's what they, they got together.
The public hearing's been held, the public council.
Mr. President, let's hear from the other side.
Well, you got all them standing up.
I mean, I would like to hear, because I think two weeks ago, a month ago, we asked her to come back with a plan. I think she presented that to the plan, and I think, Mr. Lyons, I don't know if this is your first time sending, but, you know, to let the, the organization, I understand both sides. You present your plans, because I'm pro-business, but I understand what neighborhoods to try to put forth. And I hope you guys can meet a, a happy median, uh, you know, to do what's right within the community. You know, I know everybody's in the business to make money, and we wanna be, but just explain what your plan is, uh, because I think we're voting on this tonight, so I would like to hear what your plan and what you're talking about. And on what's being said, I think it's, it's a two-way street when we talk about communication, whether it's on the owners or on the community. If we got the bridge to get out to try to make this happen for everybody's involved. I don't wanna see you guys pointing fingers tonight. If we can make it work, we can make it work, I'm, I'm gonna follow the will of Mr. Lyons, but I have my own opinion about what we need to do. I think you guys need to talk it out, if, if we can work it out, you guys can come back, because you wanna be in business, they want what's right for the community, and I want you guys to be able to work to go forward. I would hate to see us bring it up tonight and just kill it with no opportunity, because I also believe that a empty building is mean more harm to a, a, a community than something that's operating in the community, because as a city of Montgomery, we looking at tax basis. So that's my two hundred dollars.
Well, I will say that I got a call from the Dalrada Neighborhood Association president, and they don't want it either. So you got two neighborhoods.
So, you got two neighborhoods on both sides. And Forest Hills as well, so...
You're not, you're not in a positive situation. Okay? Yes, sir.
Uh, they was passing out brochures in the neighborhood when they first opened up. And I don't even think it's in this and it's nothing compared to what they got on their, uh, on the internet.
We never, we never passed it. Oh, look, oh, look.
If I could, he's not here, but if I could call John Bowman in here with, uh... He, he's given me the brochure that they come down and passed out and I printed off. It's not much, but I'll show you, Mr. President.
We all got a copy of it.
Can we get somebody from the fourth side?
Let her talk.
Let her talk.
Where you mic down? Where you mic down?
I'm sorry. Okay, so I want to explain myself and my business. First of all, I think that I'm not given the opportunity that I should be given to open my lounge. Um, I do feel that I have done everything in my power to address every issue that you guys have asked me to address, Mr. Lyons. You made reference of parking, saying that I only have 14 parking spaces. I have the gas station owner here, his store manager, gas station. Mr. Patel, he is here and he agrees to allow me to park, for my patrons to park in his area with no problem whatsoever. Um, I have a written and signed letter inside of the packet as well. So, the parking is not an issue. Um, you also came to me and said something about the traffic over there. Um, there are four entrances to this gas station that you were concerned about. Um, two on Coliseum side and two on Atlanta Highway side. So, there would not be a conflict of any type of traffic for the people to go to get gas from them. I think that was one of your issues. I also have my security guy here who I have hired to protect my patrons as well. Um, he can, he's licensed and bonded through Alabama Regulatory Board. He has all his certifications. Um, as far as the alcohol, I have, I am alcohol serve safe certified. I am TIPS certified, if you, if you know what that is, it's another alcohol training. I am pending, um... Okay, so I was addressing him, I'm sorry. So, I'm pending the other certification that ABC Board has. Once I get approval from you guys, I can go ahead and take that certification as well. So, I'm definitely not trying to start or cause any disturbance in the community. I'm simply trying to reopen what has always been a neighborhood bar and lounge.
Please talk to us. They don't have a vote back there, we do.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Please address us.
Okay, yes, sir. So, in addition to what he's saying that the community is against it, I also have 40 signed signatures in the packet. I also have two business owner letters in the packet. I also have two community member letters inside of the packet as well. Um, I also have in the packet the six houses that back up to my building. One, two, three, four, five, six, right to my building. They have all signed and agreed and one of them even wrote a letter.
Ms. Ziegler, question for you.
Yes.
Are you willing to alter, alter your hours of operation?
I've already altered my hours of operation. I would like to keep the hours.
But are you willing to, are you willing to adjust them even more if we withstand?
Yes, I am.
Please address us with any questions. Please address us with any questions. Mr. Reeves, you are, you signed up? You're the neighborhood?
At the last council meeting, y'all gave them a directive to meet with the neighborhoods and they have not done that. They haven't followed through. Maybe ought to postpone it another meeting, let them follow through on your directive.
Okay. Because I signed up too.
All right.
Um, bottom line is, this was a former, if y'all remember, the Zip line or Zip, it would have been in existence for 52 years by a white owner. Now, Brantley, did you ever have any issues with the former owner? Now that a black female has done everything that the city requires and now that these white, old white men then came up here and want to stretch her out even further, that is not fair. When usually nobody comes up here during public hearings. Most of the clubs, like these apartments, are not in compliance. And not until something happens that y'all force them to be in compliance. And she's being proactive and you're still stretching out. You're still stretching out. She's done everything required by the city. Now, if she had been a blonde, blue-eyed woman, you wouldn't have said nothing, but go ahead on, just like you did at apartment complex. It is what it is and we know what it is. That's why the voting rights, everything y'all keep following white supremacy by law. Cut it out and let's do what's right and what's by law.
Thank you, okay.
Ms. Johnson, is there something you want to say? I can't hear you.
I don't agree with anything you just said.
Listen, I just want, I want to know, I guess I have a question, um, as, as, excuse me, excuse me. I have a question as to what are the rules and the ordinance that would stop me?
Why don't we table this till you can meet with those neighborhoods? I think everybody's, rest of us agree with that, CC?
Yeah.
Why don't y'all make up, right now, set up a meeting with these neighborhoods right now?
I think, Mr. Grams, I'm a little confused as to what I'm gonna accomplish with this meeting because I've spoken to Mr. McGuire. Mr. McGuire, Mr. McGuire told me flat out he is completely against what I'm trying to do. So, I don't, I'm not sure. That, that's exactly what you said.
That is a negative statement in a way. I told her I was not against anything that she does for us business, but I was against liquor toll. I said I do not want liquor license or people drinking and coming down our streets, our neighborhood with kids in the street.
We understand all that.
The reason, the rea, the reason...
Mr. McGuire?
Hold on. Johnny Zip closed up because city passed the order, it's a 10 o'clock curfew. And then they, they got that appeal and then he, then he got turned to the state and it's 11 o'clock. I cannot talk anymore because I got too much static in the background.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Talk to us. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna table this for a month.
Mr. President, why don't, since there's so much confusion, why don't we pick a day next week? Uh, the 12th, which is a new... Pick a date on the 12th of next Wednesday or Thursday, whatever works for you guys. Y'all come down here and let's get it out and be done with it.
We can get it out for open end now. Because it's not fair if she paid taxes to get everything that she probably did and you basically telling us to go get permission from them, that don't make sense. It really don't make sense because guess what? She paid city taxes, she paid county taxes, she paid state taxes, which pays you dog.
I understand. I'll, I'll meet with them on, whenever they have next week. Um, I really hate to keep prolonging this because of the fact I have already had this...
Brantley? Retired bars in the neighborhood. We wish somebody would come up with a better business plan than bars in the neighborhood. You mentioned Blue Moon Cafe.
Yes, that's in the neighborhood.
About a year or so back and we're actually eyeballing that place because we don't know if a patron not too long ago came up Dalrada Road and ended up in some lady's bedroom that I just had to put guardrails up on the corner of Dalrada and Marika. And at the end of the day, I don't see anything respectful about a business model is open from whenever 2:00 a.m. is a place to go get drunk. And, you know, you can say it is what it is, but that's what it is.
Okay, all right, no more? I declare the public hearing's over. It's been in front of the council now.
Mr. President, I think we need to move your table for 30 days because we, we in this, we need to table.
I want to see it table tonight until we bring it back up.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Y'all want to go home?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
With all due respect, I would like to make a table, to table this for 30 days. I think we got a lot going on. I, I would hate to see a business owner, I want to see the, the neighborhood association, the business owner try to work this out. We gonna always have to and from when it comes to bars and the neighborhood, but we got to understand the fact, people drink. People go out for entertainment. So, we got to look at this as a wholehearted situation. We are Montgomery. We, we want entertainment, we want tax basis. We just showed that up on this thing about our alcohol. So, we got this stuff going on in Montgomery. I respect communities, I respect neighborhood, but I want to give people opportunity to do it. So, if we can table this for 30 days and come up with a solution...
Mr. Calhoun, excuse me, can I please go with what Mr. Pruitt said and we can meet if it's okay with them?
If you follow me, I'm gonna help you, okay?
Okay.
I want to table this for 30 days until we can come up with a solution. With Mr. Pruitt, he can come in and put the date if you guys want to come to meet. And then we can come back within 30 days to make this happen. So, Mr. Pruitt, if you want to say...
They got a motion to table for 30 days? Motion for 30-day table?
I'm on the favor.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Table for 30 days.
Table for 30 days, okay?
So, get with them and set a date when you guys want to meet and you guys will come back. We'll bring it up before the council in 30 days and we'll vote it up and down.
Okay, y'all say 30 days. Do you mean the first meeting in February?
Yeah, yes, first meeting in February.
All right, next item?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, there's, so there's more...
Next item?
Y'all, y'all get with the association.
All right, let's go. Y'all, talk outside.
Thank y'all.
Talk outside.
Item five, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and sale of real estate for economic development at 1501 Maxwell Boulevard to Brady Co. LLC, Brady Co.
You got anything you want to say? You got a question, Lois? You got a question, Lois?
Mm-mm.
I'm good.
We're good, we're good. Any motions, just spin the rules, item number five.
Mr. President moves to spin the rules.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President moves to the...
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Item six, fiscal year 2021, rebuild Alabama annual report.
Everybody leaving because I got up here.
Yeah, you're up here now, you can do your...
Mr. President, I move for a German.
2021 rebuild Alabama annual report. There's two times that we come before the council. In August of each year, we pass the plan, which is generally our residential paving plan. This, this is the report on the plan that was passed in August of 2020. Uh, approximately 116 street projects, one bridge project were in that plan. That totaled to $6.7 million. Uh, we began with $580,000 from the rebuild act. We received $1,099,164 in rebuild Alabama funding in 2021 and we had 1.670,953 total available funds. Uh, all sources combined, we completed a total of 40 streets from that plan, spending a total of $1,152,716.80 of rebuild Alabama funds. Including those projects, we also completed another 12 road projects for a grand total of 52 residential street projects, uh, equalling 16.81 miles in fiscal year 2021. Including the rebuild Alabama funds, we spent a grand total of $1.56306 on road projects in 2021. Most of the remaining 2021 rebuild Alabama projects, plus some of the new streets, were adopted for the fiscal 2022 plan. That was back in August. Uh, the 2022 plan has 86 street projects and one bridge project included. We carry forward a balance of $518,236 to spend on the 2022 plan and expect around $1.2 million from this, this year's distribution with the final two cent per gallon increase that the state imposed. So, we'll be up to the total six cents that was, that was originally proposed. That is the complete report for the rebuild Alabama plan.
Very good, thank you. This is a list of streets that would be paved for them?
This is the list of streets that were in the plan. The ones in yellow are the streets that were paved with the rebuild Alabama money.
Okay, very good. Thanks so much. Any questions of Mr. Conway? Okay, next item?
Item seven, resolution setting a showhouse hearing as to why the business license should not be revoked for Tuesday, January the 18th at 5:00 a.m. for Ravenwood Apartments at 2230 Woodley Square West.
Motion to adopt, motion to spin the rules?
Motion to spin the rules?
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right.
Resolution is adopted. Item eight, review of completed plans for Serenity Apartments at the Park at 4900 Plaza Drive.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, and Chief of Police. My name is Bobby Cleveland and I'm, I live in Serenity Townhouse and on Park Town Way. I have had to deal with some serious medical issues and they have pictures of the circumstances that I'm living in. I have had to sleep in water, in a mattress. There's the mold and mildew on my toilet in the bathroom. The next one, every time they, that's the hole that's running into my bed that has turned it so brown. But I'm quite sure you wouldn't want to live under those circumstances. I contacted, the last time I was at the city council meeting, I tried to talk to Mr. Mitchell. He threw me under the bus like, you know, it's not irrelevant. This is still going on. There's, if you come to my house right now, there's mold and mildew everywhere. The floors are so filthy. If you put on a pair of socks, you, they'll be black by the time you get to the end of the, to the end of the floor. I have COPD. I'm living in an unsafe, unhealthy environment. I have been from one end of Montgomery to the other. I am 65 years old and I feel like no one should have to live under these circumstances. No, I have no money to move. I can't, I can't sleep. I'm having bad headaches over and over and over again every day because I can't breathe with bronchitis. No one has said anything. Yes, I'm, I'm on the, I'm pending for the emergency assistance program, but when is that gonna come? Am I supposed to just die until that happened? I can't keep living under these circumstances. No one has offered me anything. I talked to the district manager a long time ago about this constant leak, leak. I have so many pictures from the beginning to right now. Right now, if you come to my house, you can see all the mold and mildew that is just sitting up there and I'm sucking it in. I do have a doctor's excuse saying this lady cannot. COPD, bronchitis, it's nothing that you can get rid of. I have a lung disease. Am I supposed to wait until they decide to do something or die? Okay, I have came, I have, just like I said, Mr. Mitchell did not reach out to me. I was down here on the first, on New Year's Eve. Thank God for Mr. Sankey. He went above and beyond to help me. I'm in tears because I don't know what to do. Nobody has helped, I don't have any money where I can just get up and move. I don't have that. And, and, and every time they get the, whoever this man is to replace it, it comes right back to the same. We have no control over water. And until this situation is fixed, it's gonna remain, I'm gonna remain unsafe and unhealthy. Now, if you want, if you don't understand what I'm talking to, let me come and live at your house and you come and stay at mine and see what it feels like. And just like I said, he was aware of this because he told his secretary to take the pictures and he would be over to Serenity. He has not yet to be over there to find out what he can do. Can he help me? Can he steer me in any direction? I feel that is very unfair.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
So, so we can talk about this. We've, we've been working on these apartment complexes for...
I live in a townhouse.
The townhouses for, for a minute. The townhouses for a minute. I have been doing everything, that's why they're here in front of me now, because they up under review. Attorney Ellis, I asked you thirty days ago to, no, more than thirty days ago, to give me a plan of action, correct?
Yes, sir, we submitted a plan of action.
When did you submit it?
At the last council meeting.
On the seventh, because it was supposedly due on the.
No, it was in the middle of November. We submitted a plan of action.
On December the what?
I'm sorry?
What date did you submit that, that plan of action?
When we were here last time, well, I gave a notebook to each one of you guys.
And after that plan of action, you guys did have a shooting that I addressed as well out there, correct?
I'm, I can't, I can't hardly understand you, I'm sorry.
I said, since the plan of action y'all put in place, you did have a shooting out there, correct?
There was one shooting, yes, there's an isolated incident, I called you.
And then you did have a shooting again on, in January, correct?
There was one shooting that I'm aware of, and you called.
And there was another one in January? This January, yes.
Yes, sir. I called you back, and I told you it was an isolated incident, that the video cameras that were in place since the last meeting, that they were working with the police officers in the investigation. But it was an isolated incident, someone from off campus came there, and they've been working with the police department to try to resolve it.
Okay, and then we also talk.
It's no one at the complex, but the security, everything since we were here last, there's been a lot done out there. And I know that you have, I don't, I hear what she's saying, but you've been monitoring that place very carefully. You been out there at night?
Yes.
And I believe you've seen some improvement since the last meeting.
Yes.
You were concerned about trees. All of that's been taken care of. They've done it. From what I understand, above and beyond, this is the first time, I don't know about these repairs. This, we thought we were here on the safety meeting, but she can answer this, she's the manager.
Can you ask about the repairs?
But, do you have any, we've done everything since that plan of action, and we submitted this the other day. I don't know what else is outstanding. Is there anything on that list that we submitted to you guys that hasn't been done? Because I'm not aware of anything. It's all been done.
I guess the issue now that I'm getting a lot of complaints, what you're seeing here for is the mold, for is repairs, and I guess that's the second question is, what are we doing about these repairs? If any?
They're making repairs. They make repairs all the time. Folks call out there, there was.
One of you, can y'all step up and talk about the repairs?
She'd be glad to.
Hi. So, Ms. Cleveland, how you doing?
I'm fine.
All right, she's been out at the property for many, many years, as a lot of people know. She has been, since I've been there, I've been aware that she's been having issues with her roof. Every time Ms. Cleveland called, our guys are down there at that very second. If we need to call out a contractor, he may not always can come right at that moment, but he's always out there within a day or so. I even asked Ms. Cleveland, hey, would you like to just be transferred so that you're more comfortable and maintenance or and the contractors can do what they need to do on the roof? She refused. Did you or did you not?
Okay, when you asked me, you asked me where would I like to go? I said, you didn't say I could put you here, I could put you in a.
Ms. Cleveland, I clearly stated, would you like to.
Ms. Cleveland.
Half of the time, you didn't even know that the roof was not getting fixed.
Doctor, Ms. Cleveland, we're listening to the lady.
Yeah, let me listen to her, Ms. Cleveland. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, so. So those repairs have been made. She's called the city several times. They've, yes, and they've came out and addressed the issues that she had with them. If I'm not mistaken, a lot of the issues was tenant related. That is not no longer there. I have walked Ms. Cleveland's unit myself. So this is a surprise to me because Ms. Cleveland knows we have a great relationship on the property. So for her to do this at this time is very upsetting.
Okay. All right, no, we don't need you, Ms. Cleveland.
Mr. President, so you said, excuse me, ma'am, so you saying that's not a true picture?
That, that has been fixed. I don't, that picture, I don't know when she took this picture, I don't know how long it's been, but that has been fixed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
One other thing, when can I make a personal visit of the property that I can actually see some of the insides? Because like I said, I do come at night, but I cannot see some of the stuff that's going on in some of the inside of those apartments. When can I make an appointment to come out there?
And again, Mr. and Mrs., with all due respect, I extended that invitation, as you know, last week. We're open anytime.
Yeah, I want to do it, I want to do it, I want to do it in a public form.
Sir?
I want to do it in a public forum. I want the public to hear that I'm making an attempt to come out there. I didn't want to do it behind closed doors. So I'm asking now, when can I make an appointment to come out there?
You can make an appointment now.
So tomorrow?
Yes, that's fine.
What, give me a time?
I'll be there all day from eight to five.
What, what time?
I'll be there eleven thirty.
That's the.
Eleven thirty?
Now, we're talking about Serenity.
Yes.
This is, this is the townhome, this is what it looks like right now. After the hole, this is what it looks like right now.
Okay.
Just, now, just so we're clear, there's, because I want to make sure we're going to the right place. There's three complexes. There's one that's called Townhomes, okay? That's not on the agenda tonight, is that? And then there's Serenity, then there's the Oaks. Okay, are you coming to Serenity?
This is Serenity Town.
I just want to make sure you come to the right place.
Yes.
Okay.
We set that for tomorrow?
Yes, set that for tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Satisfied? Next item? Thank you.
Item nine, application for a business license for a rental hall event center doing business as the CoLab Collective at 215 North Perry Street.
Representatives, okay.
Hello, I'm Anthony Pollard.
And this is application business license rental hall, okay? I don't think we, we need a public hearing on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Motion on this?
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Have most approved, all the favor.
What name to suspend the rules?
We need a motion to suspend rules for.
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules?
I can't hear you.
Take her out.
Ladies, we'll have you on business momentarily.
Okay.
All right, now, motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President, motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Congratulations, ladies.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Okay, next item?
Item ten, application for a special retail more than thirty days liquor license doing business as Hilltop Public House at 3 North Gulf White Street.
This is exciting, this is a public hearing. If you don't like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing that public hearing has been held, please give us your name for the record.
My name is Andrew Senansky, and I'm here with Will O'Connor.
Okay, and you're gonna be at five points for the new, you're gonna be at five points for the new facility, I understand?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, okay, very good. Council, y'all got a question?
No questions. I want to suspend the rules, Mr. President?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Item eleven, resolution appointing De Monica Pew to the museum board.
Yeah, motion to suspend rules and rest the agenda?
So move?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Ms. Johnson, you need a.
Mr. President, motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item twelve, resolution reappointing Katie Williams to the architectural review board.
Move to adopt.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Thirteen, resolution reappointing John C. Stanley to the Board of Adjustment.
Move to adopt.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item fourteen, resolution reappointing Dallas Hanberry to the Montgomery Historic Preservation Commission.
Move to adopt.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item fifteen, pursuant to section eleven fifty-three B one Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed location.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move for adoption.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item sixteen, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lines.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. And Mr. President, Counselor Graham has requested that Pine Oaks Apartments be called to the next council meeting for review of that apartment complex.
Very good, please have a.
I have one too, Ms. Blaylock.
Uh-uh, no.
Narrow Lane Villa?
Narrow Lane Villa?
Yes, ma'am.
For review? Okay. I do not have any contingencies, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
Oh, oh, oh.
You got, is it?
Oh, oh, I got three people. Doctor Pleasant? Doctor Pleasant, are you here? Speak on Catholic Methodist Church? Daisy Fan, speak on North Pass? Ms. Fan? Here, Ms. Fan? Okay.
Good evening to all who's present.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Daisy Fan, president of the North Pass Neighborhood Association. It is mandatory that I speak on behalf of the residents of North Pass. I want this to be understood, that this is not for me. It is for the persons that I have represented for the past twelve or thirteen years. I'm sure that they have been satisfied with my performance. Frankly, I have never received any complaints from the citizens of this community. I have received many awards from the different departments in the city. I supported our council person one hundred percent, not only physically, but financially, more than any person since I moved from Fairfax, Virginia. We are more than speechless with the input in the Montgomery advertiser from our council person, and I quote, "It is not going to happen this year or next, bill in slow motion." The information that was stated seems to suggest that she has no interest in honoring her duties as a representative of this community. I'm dissatisfied with the comments and her lack of showing interest in addressing the community needs. I believe the citizens allow this type of behavior to exist. Before any person take office here, it should be mandatory that they should have orientation classes to know, they will know how to address the citizen in a manner. That is professional as well as being polite. Thank you. I'm sure Mr. Genright will tell you the person I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sister Knott?
Not. Sister not.
Not, sister not, speak to us? Thank you, Ms. Fan.
Is there any response?
No, we'll handle that with ourselves, okay? Thank you very much. Sister not?
Praise the Lord and good evening.
Good evening.
And happy New Years to everybody. I'm coming, I'm coming on behalf of my community because I live right on E.D. Nixon Street. And we have been having a lot of problems. We've been having a lot of shootings and everything on my street. I've tried to reach out to the people that are over our community, like Dixon or Stewart, Lieutenant Stewart. And I talked to, I think it was Lieutenant Stewart I talked to, I said, we need somebody who care about our community. He said, you're right, you do need somebody who care. So he was letting me know that he didn't care. And I know we have a city councilman, but out of all the people that I've talked to in my community, nobody even knows who our city councilman is. I've tried to call our city councilman several times. I don't ever get a respond on phone call back. I've tried to call several of the police officers that they say that are over our community, they don't call back. I've been trying to set up meetings. I want to know what is the plan for our community this year, because we're in a brand-new year. So I want to know what the plans are for our community, if it's anything that I can do to bring a meeting together or see if we can get the people that are over our community to come out, because Auburn Street is one of the worstest streets in our community. And like I say, here, the past few months, we have been having shootings hand over fist. You know, there have been murders, you know, and everything. And like I say, I try to reach out and I try to get in touch with my city councilman, but the city council that I had the number never will return a call. We've had other city councilmans that was basically the same way. They wasn't active in our community at all, period. And so I've been, I've been kind of working in this community for twenty-five plus years because I have a speaker that goes a mile in radio, and so I'm always out there ministering and trying to keep the word going in our community and praying over our community. But as the old African proverb says, it takes a village. It's gonna take more than just me, you know, coming down and, you know, trying to speak on behalf of our community. It's gonna take everybody who's over that community. It's gonna take everybody coming together and sitting down, talking, and making a plan on what we can do to get this community back on track. Because we got a lot going on over there, and that, the other night, it was so much shooting to, I thought it was in my backyard. And so, and so we don't have any help over there. It's like, that community has just been wiped off the map, and the only time the police officer want to come over there is to tape off something or pick up a body, you know?
I understand.
But we actually need some help in our community.
What community do you live in? What street you say?
Huh?
What street did you say you live on?
I'm on E.D. Nixon Street.
Okay, we got you. Thank you for your input, we appreciate it. We understand the gunshots, we hear them all over town, not just in your neighborhood. Chief, go ahead, chief.
Just wanted to give Ms. Knight a response. This is my first time hearing of those concerns that you had in your community. I do apologize on the response that you received from the police department. I said, I want to apologize for the response that you stated you received from the police department and the lack of response. This is my first time learning of the concerns that you have. I know over that area on the other side of Rosa Parks, we've put a lot of resources out there on the Auburn and Woodrow Street on that side.
I've been down to your office twice, and I've talked to your secretary, and they